Here we go. Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia? Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Har?
Here.
Mr. Hetzel?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larve?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed to be acknowledged and permissible. Salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no one signed up for citizens' input, so we'll go straight to the recognition awards, but there are none of them either, so let's go to our superintendent, Matt Malone, for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, there's two items under the superintendent's report, the first of which is the construction update. We are currently in a really fascinating part of the project where the exterior shell is being sheathed. We're soon to, believe in March, start the process of the exterior skin, which is a brick and stone masonry. All of that apparatus is showing up on site as we speak. There's a mock-up that we've tweeted out. You can see it up at the construction trailer for what the exterior shell will look like. It's a classic, beautiful brick design. Inside the building, we're right now installing all of the metal studs and putting the walls up. Classrooms are being formed. The roof is being completed. Concurrent with that is the retro renovation work at the fieldhouse, which is really exciting. The pool will be installed at some point in the near future, and we continue the work on the, what used to be the pay center, which is now the health classrooms and the fitness center, if you will, the weight room and wrestling room, those types of areas. Locker rooms are being done. I think the camaraderie between the high school and the construction managers has been outstanding. We have not had major issues. We're working things out. The school building committee continues to meet. It's a highly functional team, making decisions, and we're very excited about where we are overall in the entire process. I have no complaints, other than positive things to say about both our project managers, Left Field, and our architects, AI3, but also our construction management team, Suffolk Construction. All of it is, everyone involved has been absolutely outstanding. I want to thank Ken for his daily due diligence, Matt Damaris and his team for putting up with the disruptions, and believe me, when I say disruptions, I think you guys have handled them exceptionally well. This is, you know, the largest high school in Massachusetts being built right now, and we've done a great job of, I think, mitigating disruptions. I want to thank you and your teachers, your students and your families for that work. And finally, as I'll say, looking forward to this spring. We're hoping to get some more people in to be able to see the great work that's ongoing. And if there's any questions or concerns that anyone in the public has about the building project, please contact my office. We'll get back to you as fast as possible to answer any questions that you may have. So that's where we are with the construction update. The next thing on the superintendent's report is the Student Opportunity Act. We're very blessed that we have such a strong and motivating leadership in our teachers' union, who has done an amazing job of working with the parent organization, the Mass Teachers' Association, and a whole bunch of advocacy groups. And I know Mr. Corey was a part of this work. But to establish and pass the Student Opportunity Act, so the work behind the establishment of this very historic moment, I want to thank everyone in the field, from our teachers, our parents, our advocacy groups, our leadership, our students, the parents, everyone who had a hand in ensuring that Massachusetts looks at how we invest in education and changes the funding formula. So as you know, the House and the Senate, and signed by the governor, passed the Student Opportunity Act this fall, and that act shows or includes historic investments in education implemented over a seven-year rollout. As part of the year one of the Student Opportunity Act, we're receiving weighted additional funds to support health insurance costs, special ed students, second language learners, and students who live in poverty. As a result of the act, we also, concurrent with our regular budget development, we have to submit a plan to the Department of Education that outlines how our investments are in line with the Student Opportunity Act. I think the budget that I'll present tonight really shows, not a good faith, but a great faith effort on our behalf to align spending priorities with the Student Opportunity Act. This plan has to be submitted to the state on April 1. I'm anticipating likely a special meeting of the school committee in March to allow us to meet that deadline. The Student Opportunity Act plan is a three-year plan. It's a work in progress. We met with the commissioner last Friday, and from a result of that meeting, the targets have yet to been established as to what the plan will do, and that's why it will be an ongoing, living, dynamic plan. And what we write in our plan, although we only have one year of funding from the Student Opportunity Act, we're going to articulate things that we will do over time as well. So I'm not really concerned about the writing of the plan. I've got a great team working on it. We're working collaboratively with our unions, and I'm really excited about the opportunity to invest in what we need in our schools to close achievement gaps, and that's really what the heart of this historic funding is all about. So with that, I ask that the committee continue to stay focused on the Student Opportunity Act, to ensure that the House and the Senate are really taking a hard look, and if they can increase what the governor funded in House Two, that would be beneficial to us all, and to make sure that our plan meets the rational intent of the law, to ensure that every dollar that we have, we invest in services close to the needs of kids which are in classrooms. So with that, I look forward to any discussion as this meeting progresses tonight, and you'll hear me talk more about the Student Opportunity Act when I give my budget presentation, as that will include much more detailed information.
Thank you, Superintendent Malone. We have a number of travel requests. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to accept all travel requests.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Approval of the minutes from 1:13 and 1:27?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have a number of donations.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So in regard to the first item, I know I can speak for Jackie Francisco, who's director of Fine and Performing Arts, and Principal Matt Damaris at Durfee. On behalf of the Michael Troy Foundation, I think it's just a wonderful tribute that we've put up a portrait of Michael in the corridor, leading toward the arts section of Durfee High School, in that the foundation, headed by his wife, Mary Lou, can see the value in supporting Durfee Music and Fine Arts, as they donated $50, $500 from their annual concert at the Narrows. And I just think that this is a wonderful way to express how much we appreciate what Michael Troy gave to music, and the fact that we're keeping his legacy alive, and a great tribute from Mary Lou and the whole foundation itself toward Durfee Music and Arts. I just want to say thank you on behalf of our very grateful city. Thank you very much. I yield.
Any more discussion on donations? Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have a number of contracts tonight. Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. Superintendent Malone will now read the donations.
Sure. From Michael Troy Foundation to the Fine and Performing Arts, $5,500. From Jason Paces to Durfee High School, $1,569.96. From Toyota of Dartmouth to Henry Lord Community School, $1,500. From Bay Coast Bank to the Fall River Public Schools, $1,000. From Tarje to Morton Middle School, $700. From Tarje to Stone K-12 School, $700. From Donors Choose to Fine and Performing Arts, $692.06. From Donors Choose to Watson Elementary School, $578.15. From the Durfee Boosters to the Durfee Athletic Department, $540. From Alliance Energy LLC to Durfee High School, $500. From Ohio Pile Prints Incorporated to Durfee High School, $14.39. From Cardi's Furniture Store to Henry Lord Community School, one table with six chairs, a full-size leather sofa, and a love seat. From Donors Choose to Fonsoka Elementary School, upper and lowercase stamp set, six-color stamp pads, counting cones, and two assorted crayon boxes. We want to thank all of our philanthropic support, thank our donors for always keeping the Fall River Public Schools at the center of your thoughts and your generosity. Thank you.
Any further discussion? We have a number of contracts.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Any concerns on the contracts?
I have one question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Corey?
In regard to, I would just like to ask Mr. Pacico a basic question on the Ford EcoSport Mr. Pacico, what model exactly are these vans? Are they the vans or are they SUVs?
It's an SUV model, yes.
And so the purpose of these is to help?
For the attendance offices.
Yeah, for the attendance, so as to go and do outreach and bring a kid who's absent back to school?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, that's all I wanted to know. And they're all four-wheel-drive vehicles?
Yes, all-wheel-drive.
All-wheel-drive?
Yes.
Thank you, I yield. Appreciate that. That's, you know, Mr. Pacico, it's a move in the right direction. We want to let the general public know how much attendance matters, and in Fall River, we've been looking at an issue with school-based attendance for many years, and I want the public to know that this committee is standing up to try to address that problem head-on. This is just one feature of attacking the school attendance problem, but the attendance offices are a great crew. I know each and every one of them, and they're working their hearts out, and so I want the public to expect visits from them when their children are absent, because we need their kids in school. Thank you very much. With that, I yield.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have a number of grants.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Any discussion on the grants? Roll call, Deb.
Question, comment?
Sorry, go ahead, Kevin. I didn't see you.
So the one about the Verizon, you know, I think that's probably worthy of a quick explanation or something from the administration. I'm in favor of it, but that's a big amount, and that was a big line item. If we could just get a quick summary, so that the public knows what it is.
Sure. I'll bring forward Dr. Tracy Curly and Frank Farias to answer any questions. We applied for this grant several months ago. It's a national grant. We're the only school system in this round in New England to be awarded this grant, which really, what it does is connect students to extended learning time through technology. And I'll let my team explain more about where we are and what this does for us.
Want to give a summary, or? Sure. I'll do the tech piece. Sure. So we are, we, in acceptance of this grant, would be on the receiving end of about $9 million in funding. That would offer all of our middle school students and instructional staff, all of our instructional middle school staff, access to Chromebooks and digital access provided by Verizon outside the school day. So we are looking at this as an opportunity to further leverage all of the technology that we have in our buildings, that students generally don't have access to outside the school day, you know, weekends at night over the summer and things like that. It's an opportunity for all of our middle school teachers, through coaches in their buildings, to receive very targeted PD, one that's specifically aimed at leveraging that technology during the school day, and in supporting students to use it outside of the school day. So for us, it's a big opportunity. We know that nationwide, about a third of students coming from lower-income homes don't have access to the technology outside the school day. For us, this is an opportunity to get that technology into every student's hands. I think it, what we're able to provide through this grant is something that, as a district, we've been working toward for quite a few years. The opportunity for the digital access outside the school day is, would be, has certainly been cost prohibitive for us. It's not something we would otherwise be able to provide to our students, and the fact that we're able to get the 2500 extra Chromebooks into the hands of students allows us to repurpose what we have in our buildings already, so that we see the reach beyond middle school. We're looking at gains at the elementary level and high school level as well.
Tracy pretty much covered it all, but the nuts and bolts of the, how it'll affect us with technology, there's probably 2,500 devices coming in for students, 500 for staff. That'll allow us to push 2,000 devices down to the elementary school level, making them more than one-to-one. There's also off-site filtering that'll provide the students with, like, SEL, if they cert something that's harm, self-hurt, staff will get emails alerted that they are doing that. The Verizon grant will pay for back, they're giving the kids backpacks. They're also warranting the devices for two years for protection and just basic breakdown, like breakdown. So the investment on our end will probably be minimal, self-funding the loss of stolen devices, which is lower than 2% according to their data. So overall, we feel, I think I speak for the team and our principals, like, we feel it's a win-win.
I read some of the info that came in related to that we have to maintain a certain amount of instructional teachers, you know, to support, obviously, all of this, and I'm in favor of it, like I said before. It's just, I think it just needs to be said that we're getting a grant, but we're also making an investment.
Yeah. So the staffing, we need to staff the four, five middle schools with instructional techs, which we're going to share one between Henry Lord and Dorance, it'll be four, and then four technicians, like, wires and pliers type guys, like, send in repairs, send in warranties, send in fix-it stuff. But, I mean, some of that, we're at a place with access and WIDA testing that we probably should be staffing-wise looking to do that anyway. The grant will pay $38,000 for each of those instructional positions, so we'd have to cover the difference, but.
Can you just, when they take it home and go on, I think you said there's either filters or something, so that they're monitored?
Yeah.
Is there a way around that? So if a student takes something home, is there a way around the filters to have?
No. So on a Chromebook, so on a Chromebook will push an app down, we're switching to a different filtering system called Lightspeed, so they won't be able to remove that app from their device. That app will track what they're doing. If they steal, if they say that they lost it so they can use it, we can actually, we call brick it, make it, like, unusable. We can track the IPs on a Google map where it is. So the firewall will do the same thing it does here, plus while off-network.
Right.
And it could be, they could be in their cars, they could be, it's not, it's a cellular connection. It's not, they're not tethered to the house. It's a true, like, true one-to-one. They could be at a friend's house, they could be in a car on vacation. They'll have, they'll have access wherever they are, protected.
I'm definitely in favor of it. I think it's a good thing to do. Congratulations on this. It's something to look forward to, so keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah, it just begs the question. I think it's a great step forward in the right direction, definitely. I just wonder if a kid has one of these devices, a student and a teacher, and let's say the kid gets sick, and let's say the kid gets a flu, misses several days of school, would this device count toward this child's being able to stay up with the curriculum as it moves forward?
I don't see, I don't see why, I don't see why it wouldn't. We haven't made a, like, a district-wide decision to say, like, Blizzard bags, you can not have a snow day and do work from home, but I don't know why they couldn't keep up with some of the work while at home.
So I have a question for Dr. Curly, if you will. So if that's the case, then, Dr. Curly, would this be able to positively affect our attendance numbers moving forward if a child is, happens to be out of school for a very legitimate reason, but their studies keep, you know, in pace with the rest of the class?
So I think that we could use, I think that we could use the technology in student homes as a complement to any tutoring services that were in place for that student in lieu of an absence, but I don't believe, just in terms of state requirements, that we would, that we'd be able to do that. I think we could potentially develop some district policy for approval that we could leverage, but at this time, we would, I don't think that we have something in place where we could say, this student is doing something at home, even if they're absent from school, we can mark them present.
Thank you.
But I think there's a possibility that lies within that, that hasn't really been possible for us before.
Yeah, it still is kind of an open thing, but that's, it's great. Thank you very much, I yield.
You're welcome.
Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Farias, just one question, in terms of security. Obviously, they're going to hands, in the hands of our students. When they do these searches, are they, is it a cellular search, or is it going to go through a VPN? Or how are we going to protect that student from their IP address being out there in the world wide web?
So the IP, so the IP address would probably still be our personal IP, but, good question, because now they have cellular, they've disconnected from our network, now they're on cellular. They'll have the same level of filtering via cellular. So however that Chromebook travels to get out to the internet will be filtered by the Lightspeed filter.
And after, we provide?
We'll push down to the Chrome, we provide it.
Okay, and that's all in agreement with Verizon?
Yeah. There's two companies, Lightspeed and Securly, that do the same thing. We were already on target, we were already purchasing this firewall just for our, like, just to be safer as a district, but they recognize both.
I mean, I know we do a great job internally with what our students can access and can't access, and what's blocked. My children are in school, so I know what they can and can't do with their email addresses and so on and so forth. I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, obviously Verizon's done this before. We're not the first district.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure that for people who are at home, you know, there are a lot of concerns about students being on wireless devices, either through cell signal or going through an IP address through, you know, the internet, making sure that there are safeguards in place, so that not only do we know what they're searching, but there are limitations in terms of, if they do search, what information can be shared about that IP address, where the location of that device is, et cetera, et cetera. So I just want to make sure that that information is well conveyed to parents. I don't think people realize that when your son or daughter's on their iPhones and what they're searching really can be tracked back to exactly where that device is, if you're not used properly.
The geolocation, yeah.
I just want to make sure that we convey that to parents, that there's a level of safeguards in place, and this is used more for educational purposes rather than recreational purposes. With that, I yield.
Mr. Har?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frank, obviously, it's a great program, I'm all for this. Just probably reading through it the other night, I did have, and everything else has pretty much been covered for me, as far as I'm concerned, but one of them was, what happens if a Chromebook is stolen, lost, or vandalized, and the school-based technician and school leadership can work with families on a resolution? Then it goes on to the last sentence, a protocol for handling vandalism of devices is being drafted. I guess, A, what would be that resolution that the families and leadership can work with? What do you, what's that intention, if those particular incidences occur? And secondly, what's the, is that protocol completed? It says it's, is being drafted, but is that completed?
So to answer that one first, we haven't moved forward without, we didn't feel it would be appropriate to move forward without getting acceptance from the committee.
Right.
So we'll probably, based on some guidance, draft something that, we haven't had a lot of luck recouping money from parents, just with the devices that we buy.
Of course, yep.
So it's our thinking that, because it's so, the number's so low, stolen and lost, stolen and damaged, it's under, I think, 2% that that happened to. Verizon give us, they give us a 5% buffer, so there's 5% more above and beyond the enrollment number at that school. That can be used for day use. If a kid comes in, forgets their Chromebook, they could take one, or they can be used for lost or stolen. But the number's so low that even if we, typically, year over year, we purchase 500 for the middle school level.
That's mine.
Even if we purchase 5% of that number, which is 125, we're still, you know, to kind of back those up, obviously, the school's going to have to, you know, hold the students accountable, make sure that they respect the technology and that they're really taking care of it. That's, first and foremost, they say, if that's, you know, if the schools are doing that, that's where you see that low percent, the low percent of lost or stolen. So we'll enforce that, and then, I think, just self-insuring ourself with the devices, like, we would typically purchase for that, for the middle school group should cover it.
Okay.
There's also gap protection, so if we have a bump in enrollment the following year, Henry Lord goes up 100 kids, Verizon, if it's a true bump, they'll go through it X2, confirm it, and then send us another 100 devices.
Very good. Good job, Frank.
So, thanks.
Kev?
Just one further comment about the policies. So if this goes through, I would assume that there's going to be a list of policies that will be coming forward relative to the implementation?
Most likely, yeah.
I would assume that, take that as a yes.
Acceptable use.
Yeah, I mean, just so that we know, as we're asking these questions, it seems like...
Please speak English, Mr. Farias.
I would, yes.
For instance, in a policy, Mr. Har was just mentioning, if somebody gets a rental, you know, maybe we don't let them take it home.
That's right.
Because that would, you know, things like that.
They're called day users. As long as we don't, as long as we don't hit 10% day users, kid loses them every time, and we say, you can only use them at school, they're a day user, they just can't, we can't go over 10%.
Yeah, I'm only asking that when there was, let's get, comes before the policy committee, we do what it...
We'll probably have a subcommittee and discuss, yep.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
All set. Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Okay. Discussion item number one is a request for an English-language teacher at RPA, an instructional support liaison at the Talbot Middle Schools for the remainder of the year, as presented by Dr. Matthew Malone.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Second item, first read. Program of study course catalog at BMC Durfee High School, as referred by the instructional subcommittee, and presented by Mr.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Any further discussion?
I just have a comment, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Corey.
I'm just really excited about the way the program of studies is developing. We just had a subcommittee meeting in regard to it, and they're growing and evolving their programs at Durfee to reflect the needs of the student as we speak today, and I think it's just great. And anybody considering sending their young student to Durfee High School, I think, would enhance that young student's life. We're especially growing, Mr. Chair, in, as we expand CTE programming. I'm so excited to see the growth and expansion of CTE moving forward and into the mainstream, expansion of CTE moving forward and into the mainstream, and thinking out of the box with programs and, so that we can get kids into hands-on workshops after school. All of this is being discussed. We're preparing our students for 21st century, real-world jobs, and to see this being theorized and implemented through the high school, I think deserves a lot of applaud for the people who are developing these programs, as well as our body who's willing to grant permission to move forward. With that, Ayeel.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call on the program of studies at Durfee.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Third item, discussion and vote to approve the Director of Network Infrastructure and Telecom Services job description, as presented by Ken Pacheco, Chief Operating Officer.
So the, the job description that you have before you, my highlight, my purpose of, of this job description mainly would be management. We're looking for management and planning skills. Currently, now, we, we have a, a few technicians who are working, not so much independent, but they're not working over a general plan, and to implement that general plan, we do need a director. This position will allow, will allow that kind of action on a daily basis, so currently, this position here doesn't exist, but portions of it do exist. And what we're looking to do is get that management piece in this position now, and incorporate an awful lot of other duties that are being done by a couple of individuals.
Any questions, Mr. Pacheco? Mr. Agia?
Yeah, just, who does this position report to, under the job description?
It would report to me.
And then, there's other people in here?
So would Brian and Frank? Brian, Michael Azak, and Frank?
Like, who's considered the Student Information Coordinator?
That's Brian.
Yep. So I think, I mean, I'm all in favor, but I do think it's needed, and especially given all that's been going on. I do think, though, that directors, when you look director of, I think those are the two positions, are union positions?
One is, one isn't.
Yeah. So I think this is, when you look at a director and the qualifications, I think this is actually, falls under the Administrators' Union, so I am definitely in favor of it. I think it needs to be done, but I do think it's going to fall within the union, so I'd like to make a motion to approve this as a union position.
The only issue I would have with that is the work here, so I don't know how we would handle that. There's an awful lot of work that's listed by this person, and it's going to be, if they're going to require to work a lot more hours than the, than the FRAA would have in its control.
I'm only making a suggestion, so that is there, and then I believe that that would have to be negotiated with the union, so whether it, technically speaking, if we approve this right now as, as is, the union can legitimately file a grievance that it's, it's actually belongs in the union. So I'm just trying to prevent that from happening by saying we should present it as a union position, and if it doesn't fit, then it doesn't fit, but I think it's clear that it would if they actually looked at it, which I don't know that they even saw this yet.
They wouldn't have, no.
Yeah, I just, I made the motion.
Did he get a second?
Mr. Costa?
So the only question I have, Mr. Pacheco, my understanding is that it would have to be a unionized position if we had, if this position was, wasn't substantially different than other positions within that bargaining unit.
Well, it is substantially different.
Right, so do we have other positions that are in the FRAA that are similar in their requirement? My understanding is if, if they're not, if they're substantially different, then we wouldn't necessarily need to have it be part of the FRAA.
I don't think that we're, number one, I don't think we're supervising unionized, are any of our techs union. So the people that they are supervising are non-union personnel, SNons.
Okay. And as far as you know, or maybe Mr. Coogan knows, that the job description as it presents itself to us today for approval is not similar to positions we already have in existence that are FA, FRAA positions, correct? I don't, I don't mind, I don't care either way, whether it's unionized or not. I do have some apprehension because of the flexibility with number of hours that would, this position looks like it's going to need, and if it is in the FRAA and it needs to be, we can have that discussion, I guess, but so to me, it doesn't matter, but my understanding of whether or not a position needs to be placed within a union is if, if the job description is substantially similar, or significantly similar, to positions we have already within that, within that organization. So I, I raise that because if we, if this is substantially different, then I'm not sure that we need to approach that.
I feel it is. I think the director piece may be the trigger, just that piece of the title, but I, I do think that it is, that it is not any, any, there are no positions in the current FRAA that would mimic this position. It is a supervisory role, but it's also a hands-on role, which was different from most directors.
And the individuals that this person would be supervising are SNon, the non-union personnel?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And this person, you said, would be reporting to you?
Eventually. They, they are, they are, or my designee. So there are two other people who, who are involved in this.
And that would be Mr. Michael Azak or Mr. Farias?
Yes.
In your absence?
Yes.
And neither one of them are...
One is.
I'm sorry?
One is.
One is?
Yeah. Mr. Farias is in, and, and Mr. Michael Azak is not. He's an SNon.
Okay. With that, Ayeel.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
There's a second.
No second, okay.
Motion to approve, as presented?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Discussion and vote to approve request for $11,000 for amplifying units' public safety radio, as presented by Ken Pacheco, Chief Operating Officer.
So currently, we have our 15, 16 buildings that are not always conducive to radio, two-way radio operating in them. Some buildings are better than others, but it's, it's not, whether it's new or old, it just seems the configuration of the building and the construction that doesn't allow both police and fire radios to work inside these buildings on a consistent basis. So what we're looking to do with this request is to do a survey in all of these buildings, with the exception of Durfee, the new Durfee, do a, a survey and find out what, what each building needs in order to accept the transmissions from radio to radio and radio to, to base for the public safety personnel. So fire and police in those buildings are having some difficult times in certain areas, getting transmission on their radios. Our radios currently work in, in all of our buildings, however, those other radios don't work as well.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion second, Mr. Costa?
Just a quick question. So would this be a repeater that we'll be installing in certain buildings?
So this is a survey to find out what we need in those buildings. It's an amplifier. I don't know the, the exact term, but...
Right, I assumed it would be in order to boost the signal?
Exactly.
So those would be installed in each of the buildings where we have issue with communication working amongst radios?
And this will tell us which buildings we needed in, and how many in, in a particular building, if there are more, more than one needed.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, to me, I mean, this, this speaks of being no-brainer. I mean, if we have emergency personnel in a building that need to communicate with one another, we have buildings where that can't happen?
Yes.
You know, I'm just, I, I wanted just some clarity, so you'll do the survey, this cost, this $11,000 is for the survey and for any?
This cost is for a survey only.
I mean, maybe it's not a no-brainer. $11,000 to do a survey?
To, to do the, the individual walkthroughs in all the buildings with the radios, finding out which areas are, are a problem in each building. 15 buildings worth of time, I'm not sure how long it takes to do a building, but...
So I see it as listed here as a request for $11,000 for amplifying units' public safety radio.
Yeah, it is for the survey. In, in the letter, that, that's in the, in the agenda. It's in your packet.
I'm just saying what's on the agenda for consideration.
Yeah, that was my fault. I gave Deb the wrong information. It's, it's strictly for the survey.
Okay, Ayeel, someone may need to amend that motion, but...
Mr. Hetzel?
I think it's obviously a, Mr. Costa said a no-brainer. We have to get our buildings to the point where we can communicate inside them with all the public safety radios. So I think it's great. It's a bidirectional antenna, I believe is what they're called, and they're going to put in schools. And I understand that the reason it's $11,000 for the survey is that they have to go through the entire school and find the dead zones and the spots that work, so they can determine where to put the antennas when the time comes.
We've also asked for three prices, so the, the technician at the police department is the person who would normally work with all the radios and transmission and items such as this. We've asked for three prices, so that we know exactly what it's costing us, and then we will award based on price.
All right. Just to be sure, I want to amend the motion to approve the $11,000 for the survey for the amplifying units' public safety radio.
Time for motion?
Second.
Second amendment. Mr. Agia?
Is this a city expense or a school expense?
It's in the school buildings. I would say that it's our expense.
But the conversation we just had seemed more related to public safety radio, which I think is important, but just, as you were talking, it seemed like it was more for the communication of the police, fire, and EMS.
Right, so I would say the SROs have an issue, so if they're using their police radio in some buildings, they're not able to communicate with either the other SRO in that building or with whoever they need to contact, so I, which is why I took it upon myself to say that this is a, a school department expense.
And the piece of the person in their department doing the bid, was that just technical?
He's just technical advice, yes.
Giving you advice, not necessarily they were doing it.
Exactly, no.
Ayeel, thank you.
Thank you. I got a question. How much are the units when we end up buying them?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
So I have a motion and a second on an amended motion for a survey for amplifying units' public safety radios, looking for dead spots in our buildings. Any further discussion? Mr. Corey?
Just one question. Ken, after you do the survey, will you report out to us?
Yes.
To let us know what the results of that look like?
Absolutely.
Because moving forward, looks like there's going to be additional expenses to outfit this survey in the proper way, that we can ensure public safety in our schools.
I will be back with the full report.
Thank you. Ayeel.
Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Discussion and vote to approve the request for $10,000 for repair to the North Park Baseball Field, as presented by Ken Pacheco. Motion approved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kenny, the, is it a city expense or school, school department?
The, the fields, normally, the, the park department would groom that field ready for the park use. However, this is varsity and JV baseball, and not necessarily the, the leagues that are playing on that field, so in concern for safety of our students who are playing on a city field, the field needs to be upgraded infield and, you know, base paths, pitches mound, so, which, again, which is why I'm presenting this. The varsity field has been underwater for so many years at the beginning of the season, and then, once they finally get to play on it, you know, the season's half over, JV field no longer exists with the construction, so we don't have any alternatives. So what we'd, we'd like to do is, is repair that field, get it into shape that, that we'll be comfortable with, with visiting teams and, and also our teams, and then we can move forward.
And have we communicated with the park board and the city side?
So the athletic director has communicated with the park board and let them know that we would do repairs if necessary, and then also that we would do the, the striping, you know, the lining of the fields before games, and that would not be a park expense.
Okay, and now, how about, I'm not sure if those have been taken care of or completed, but the bleachers?
They haven't been, so the bleachers will not be available.
The brick?
Yes.
For bleachers, those are, I know they're taped off.
They're still taped off, yes.
So that, that won't be taken care of by the start of the season?
No, and that won't be an expense that we would incur.
No, I'm just, I'm just kind of...
Yeah, they will not, they will not be ready.
They will not, okay. All right, no, I, I mean, I think it's, it's a good alternative to play, play there, and the repairs have to be done, they have to be done, so obviously, absolutely in favor of this, as long as we've covered all bases with the city side and the park board, and they're okay with it.
Yes.
Why wouldn't they be, of course, but just wanted to make sure on that, so thank you.
Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pacheco, so the park department would ultimately decide whether or not to issue a permit for the use of that field?
Yes.
So are there any assurances from the park department that if we invest the $10,000 in fixing that field, that exclusive use of that field would be for Durfee Athletics?
So we're issuing, they would issue the permit based on our request for usage, days, times?
So that we could use it?
So that we could use it.
I'm talking about for other, other organizations.
Once we have the permit, once we have the permit, then the time and days on that permit would signify it's our use. Anybody else on those fields would have to be, would leave, which is how all of those parks work.
So you're anticipating that our request to use those fields and that permit would cover us until the end of school?
It would cover us for as long as our need is, which is until school, until the season is over.
So the season ends in early June, mid, early June, unless they make the state tournament?
Right.
So after that, if I'm a AAU team and I want to use North Park?
Then they would need to go to...
I make that request to the park department, and then they could issue a permit, because we no longer need it.
Exactly.
Who's then responsible for the upkeep of the field, then?
The park department, and whatever field uses, and whatever team uses that field. Our responsibility will end on the date that we've requested to have that, that field until...
Right, and I don't mind making any investment. Obviously, it's a facility we need. We don't have access to the one at the high school right now, because typically, it's underwater until mid-season, so most of the games need to be played away, so I, I would like to make this investment in North Park, so that we could use it, have a home field, et cetera, et cetera. My concern is that we'll make the investment, and then after our use is done, for school purposes this year, we now have other organizations, AAU, who may be, you know, charging their own players to play, utilize that field at a cost that's not something that we determine.
Right.
And then what happens next season? If the field is in disarray over a summer of times worth of use, do we then, for next year, have to go back and invest again to get the field ready for next season? I'm, I'm only asking these questions. Again, I don't mind making any investment, but I know that there are organizations out there looking for places to play, and if our permit's going to carry us to the end of school year, and then you're going to have another outside team from, could be from anywhere, these AAU teams come from all over, utilize that field at zero expense, updated, mound redone, infield raked and screened, no grass growing, et cetera, et cetera. They use that all summer, and then, if they leave it in disarray, where does that leave our athletic department come next season? Is it going to be another $10,000 to get those fields up and running for next season for, for us? These are questions I'm asking, because once we vote on this and the money gets spent, we're no longer in the approval process, if you will. It turns over to the park department.
Sure.
They own it. They can issue permit for whomever they choose throughout the summer, and I'm not saying it shouldn't be used, but we have a use of schools policy that allows us on our properties to rent those facilities for upkeep, and I don't think the city has that ability, so my concern is that multiple organizations may use it throughout the summer and leave it in a position that we're no better off than we are today, and then where does that leave us next year? Would another $10,000 expenditure to get the fields ready for our students to play through the middle or end of June? So I only raise that, because I want to be supportive of it, but I also don't want to have you back here next season for another $10,000 to fix the fields again, because we only had use of it through permit until the end of our season.
Sure. So I, I would say that the, I'm going to give you the long answer. The short answer is, we're going to spend some money this year, and everything we spend will not be wasted, because it's not going to deteriorate, no matter what they do to it, as bad as it is right now. This is a lot of years of non-major expenditures. In my past life, I was DPW director, which, under, under the DCM title... In my past life, I was DPW director, which under, under the DCM title, parks was there. And the personnel that is in that department is not of substantial quantity to do the kind of work that we're asking to be done. So therefore, it isn't getting done to this extent. And that's 16 years, 14 years' worth of experience to know that. I don't know when the last time the mound was rebuilt, who rebuilt it, when the base pads were redone, when the infield was cut, and all of that grooming. So we do, on the city side, we did what was absolutely necessary to get those fields in shape. And most infields in the city are handled by the leagues, the individual leagues. So for some, to make this kind of expenditure would be outrageous on their budgets because they're charging $40 or $50 per head, and uniforms alone are probably eating up a lot of their money. So my, my statement would be that we will not have to spend this kind of money again on that field if we wanted to use this field next year. Our own people, our own grounds people would go there and groom this field as if they would the Durfee field after a winter because our field gets used by other groups. We've rented our field out. By the time it dries out, it's good for rentals, but it's not good for us. It's too late. So we do rent that field out, and our people, our building and grounds people groom those fields, and they are very playable. So that's where I would think we're at.
Yeah. And I have no question that our grounds keepers will keep it.
Right.
Where it needs to be playable, and it's just to make that investment without any assurances that over the summertime, next year... And again, I agree. The field's not gonna deteriorate one year over the next that badly, but the reality is that if no one's keeping up with it throughout the summer, when we go to take over the field come next spring, or the following spring, we're gonna be right back at it. I just, I'm gonna support it this time, but I can just, if you're coming back here next season with another request for additional monies to pour into a field that we're gonna use for a short period of time, and then again, it's gonna get turned over to outside leagues that are gonna use it and play on it and maybe profit. I don't know what the AAU structure is in terms of, I know it costs a lot of money to play on those teams. I know some of that goes to their tournaments and you name it, but if it's not going to the city to upkeep of the, for the upkeep of the field, then we're contributing money for our students and then turning it over to the city to say, as long as you wanna use it and no one's using it, we'll issue the permit. My concern is that if we don't keep track of that, it's gonna be a continuous investment year after year. And I just hope the city realizes that we're making this investment, and that they look through that lens when outside organizations are looking to use it as well. With that, Ayeel, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have one question. That $10,000 is for two years. We can block out right now and tell them next year we want May, June, July, or whatever is April, May, June.
We could get a permit for two years, yes. So I think that, what I'm following, committee member Costa's saying that there are gonna be a lot of players on that field when we leave in June. And they're gonna play all summer and late into the fall. And then when we come back, we'll probably be the first team to step on it again, and it won't be in the shape that we left it. And he's absolutely right. There is no guarantee as to what kind of shape. The only thing I can say is, is that it won't go back to what we're finding right now only because there's gonna be, you know, there's gonna be a lot of work done to it. The work that I'm looking at, this dollar amount, is not for our people to do this work. This is to have a contractor come in who is skilled in working on baseball fields, to set this field up for us to use this season, and that labor hopefully will allow us next year to do minimal work on that field in order to get it ready for the season.
But let's box it out so that...
Absolutely.
You know, we don't need specific dates because we don't know the schedule, but we'll tell them March, April.
We can give them, right.
Yeah, okay.
And we can do that.
Great. Tom, then Kevin?
Yeah, this is a contingency plan that I could see. A lot of my questions have been answered through my colleagues' questions. I was wondering about the projected term length of usage for North Park, given the construction at the high school, and I know once the school is finished, that the grounds will still not be complete. So we're gonna probably need to use this baseball field for maybe three or four years?
We, we, projected school opening is September of '21, which would mean the first baseball season would be in '22. I don't know, I'd like to tell you that there's gonna be plenty of funds available when the construction ends, that we're going to be able to do some work, some heavy-duty work on our fields. And that's my hope because the baseball field needs some serious amount of work. And the goal is, is that that gets that, that facelift.
It seriously does. I know the current ball field needs a lot of work.
It does.
So I know that this is a contingency plan. I just wanna know that, given that, it's sort of like we're stepping into new territory. If things aren't working out with the leagues or the city as far as our expenses are concerned, do we have a right to rescind and reformulate at that point? I mean, would the city pick up a little bit more of a responsibility if need be, if the field is abused in any kind of way after our term is done, like over the summer?
I, I won't speak for the park board or Nancy Smith, who's the director. I will say that she goes above and beyond helping out the leagues that do use the field, and most of them at no cost, and a lot of the leagues will help out. So North Park League is pretty robust, both their upper field and lower field, and I expect that, knowing what they're going to receive when we're finished, I think they'll stay on top of that over the course of the summer.
So Ken, do you know if they're gonna build fences for the outfield? Are they gonna have fences?
As far as I know, I, I don't believe that we're going to do anything. However, I haven't had an opportunity to discuss any of that work with the athletic director.
Because they see that, Fenway Park's got a short left field, right?
Back in the day, you had to hit it to...
The left field at North Park, that's a real short porch. I can see a lot of homers going there. So we better have some good pitchers, man, to stand up to our opposing teams. With that, I yield.
Thank you, David Ortiz. Kev?
So a couple of, a couple of comments. First, I wanna say that they only do one-year permits, if I recall, or do they do two-year permits for the park board?
I couldn't tell you. I remember all one-year permits going through. However, I'd be willing to bet that we could sign some kind of an agreement with our expense.
I just don't wanna have our board telling the park board what to do. You know, they get territorial, but they're also responsible for that, so...
They are.
Yeah.
The second thing I wanna say is, talking about money to the parks, this is a city issue. They don't put enough money in to repair the parks to begin with, so we have somebody on the board that might have something to say about that in the future. But I would say an increase in the money that goes to the park department to take care of those fields, that North Park field wouldn't be in the condition it's in today if the park board was funded properly, would be my assessment. The last couple of questions. The money for the, to transport the kids coming down, I think I asked this in the past, if that's coming from the school building fund, and I thought I was told yes.
So we will, we will look into that, and there is an opportunity for us to charge any extras that are being incurred through construction. Now, the JV expense is a legitimate construction expense. The flooding of the, of the varsity field is, we own that. That's, that's strictly school department. That field has been flooding well before construction. In fact, you know, the work, some of the work that's been done out there will alleviate some of the flooding because we have areas now where we've built swales, and that water is moving better than it used to. However, the field's about a foot and a half to two feet too low, and that flooding will still occur. So the JV field not being there at all is legitimate, and JV players being transported would legitimately be a cost that we could look at for construction. Absolutely.
So I, I'm curious, and I don't need the answer now because I'm sure you can't make that decision, but there could be an expense. I recall in the past, when there's a legitimate expense that's attributable to a field being there one year and gone the next, and the transportation for those children is an expense that gets reimbursed through the, it's not a could or might, it usually...
And I will, and I will push for that.
Yeah, if you just, that's just an aside.
I will.
The other pieces, and you know the story, superintendent knows it as well. When I looked at the plans for the new school and the baseball field was the only thing shaded out, and I was saying, okay, when's the new field going in? It's not part of the plans. So I want the committee members and the public to understand that that's not necessarily part of the plans. And even if we're able to save money, I'm not gonna speak for you, but this is what I've been told, we might look at replacing that one field, but we also, we started with two baseball fields. So when we talk about, well, this might be a one-year, we might need North Park forever if we don't have two baseball fields that take, you know, to play the two games simultaneously.
There is, there is a contingency plan that the superintendent and I have been looking at at Talbot, where we would construct two more fields at Talbot that would be used, obviously, throughout the district. And that expense would be a lot less than trying to construct a field where there is no field at Durfee currently. So there is plans to add a softball field at Durfee, a new construction on the practice field of the football. So it would be a turf field, and softball would play on that field also. So we have some contingency plans or ideas, so to speak, to make use of some of the land that we have and allow us to get back to a relatively one-for-one complement of what we lost.
Yeah, I think you've been, superintendent yourself, have been upfront about that. The only thing I wanna keep putting on the, on the front burner is that if by chance there's not money left in that account, this committee should be able to make the expense necessary to have that. We have to have, we can't have a Division I varsity program with that field and a brand-new high school. So if the money runs out, I would ask you to come back to us to figure out a Plan B. Because we can't have, that's really not even acceptable in any way, shape, or form. The only, my last comment is, if, are we gonna use any other fields in the city? And if we are, you might not know that yet because I don't even think they issued permits. All I would ask is that we treat the other parks similar, and if they need stuff to help with their field, that we also do that.
So the only other park that we used last year and will probably use this year is Britlin, which is a turf field. So we don't, won't have any issues there. We do have an expense there for bathroom use, but we do not have a use for the field expense. But baseball, we, it looks like this here would be our best. It's the closest, and it looks like our best opportunity.
Thank you. Ayeel?
Any further discussion?
One more question?
Mr. Corey?
You know, Mr. Pacheco, in regard to our use of the field at North Park, seeing how things turn out in the summertime, can we get a report out sometime in our July meeting or our, or our August meeting here as to like how everything worked out? Just so that we could review it, because we're in uncharted waters with this. And, and give us a report out on how it all worked out with the city, with the park board, the condition of the field, so that we'll know how to move forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
I can do that. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any, roll call, Deb?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Discussion item number six, discussion and vote to approve as read by Vice Chairman Costa.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Go ahead there, Dr. Costa.
So there's an official motion that needs to be read? So the motion would be, well, there's a motion on the floor as it stands right now, Mr. Chairman. So procedurally, I don't know if you wanna ask the makers to rescind those or...
Yeah, could we do that? Because this, this motion has to be read before we do it.
I will draw that.
You withdraw?
Thank you. The motion would be, having convened an open meeting February 10, 2020, prior to the statement of interest submission closing date, the school committee, in accordance with the charter and bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority a statement of interest form dated February 15, 2020, for the Wiley School located at 2585 North Main Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. The purpose of the project would be for replacement, renovation, or modernization of the school facility and its systems, such as roofs, windows, boiler systems, doors. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting a statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of the grant, or any other funding committed from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the city to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. I make that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Yeah, no, I have a discussion. I'm, I'm just wondering, what's the long-term vision of the use of this facility?
Superintendent?
So, first things first is we wanna protect the building so we have it in the future, but part of this process is a feasibility to figure out one of three options. Additional elementary school space, early childhood center on the north side, or expansion of stone elementary program. It's a one-unit school. It's a very small footprint, so one of those three options meets our needs overall strategically. And we'll figure out as the process goes which one makes the most sense. And come back to the committee, of course, for discussion.
Great, so this is a way for us to try to expand our classroom space for early childhood education?
It's one of the options, yes.
Thank you. With that, I yield.
Kev?
Just if we could get a, I didn't get to see the subcommittee meeting, but the $4.7 million number?
Yes.
This is only to ask if we could get it accepted. It's not locking us into anything.
So all it is, is to get us into the next round, which would be the feasibility study. And the feasibility study for a building this size would probably be $250,000, of which 80% would be reimbursed by MSBA, and the city's portion would be the 20%. Following that section, after you have that feasibility study, then again, your decision lies at City Hall with the mayor and the, and the city council as to whether or not you wanna move into construction phase. So the feasibility study is short money on the city side, about $50,000. And on the construction side, that $4.7 million price tag, of which, of the items that are listed here, it will be an 80/20 split. There will be items, there will be triggers in construction that will require some ADA upgrades. This is a six-room schoolhouse. So the, the comparison to the two other projects that we've had in similar schools, Westall and Watson, really don't exist because the buildings are much larger. So this building here is about 20,000 square feet or less. And as I said, the six classrooms, it will require an elevator, it will require fire suppression. But the three major envelope items, your roof, your windows, your doors, and also the boiler, is items that will preserve this building. The ADA requirements would be bathrooms and handicap accessibility.
Yeah, I just, I think I mentioned this last time. I'm not sure that it's, it should even be considered? Six-room, you're gonna spend $250,000, then if they spend $4.7 million, and we're gonna spend another million or whatever we're gonna spend, or maybe more, we're talking $5, $6 million for a six-room schoolhouse? Is there better, is there better options out there for that same money? And apparently, you're presenting this to us, I would assume, that you think it's worth it?
I do think it's worth it, and I think that, again, we have options for that building. We keep talking about class size reduction, and without more space, that we can only do so much with what we have to deal with in the district already. The Stone School is progressing, I think, faster than, than we would have anticipated, and we will eventually run out of space there also. And then the K and pre-K situation that we have in the district, if there's ways that we can move some of that around to allow us to open up classroom space in different areas where we are becoming congested, or where we have a lot of neighborhood students who are not allowed to go to their neighborhood school because of lack of space, which requires more busing, sending them to other locations.
Yeah, I'm gonna support it because it's really not that big a deal, but I just keep wanting to tell you that I, when it comes time to really invest millions of dollars in it, I'm not sure if the council or the mayor or us are gonna even wanna do it, but with that, I yield. Thank you.
Any further discussion? There are motion and a second? Roll call?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number seven, tenet of agreement for special education van transportation as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee and presented by Ken Pacheco.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Costa?
Just quickly, if I can just have... Just quickly, if I can just have, Mr. Pacico, you shared with the subcommittee the anticipated savings.
Yes.
Rather significant, if you could just share quickly with the full committee, I mean, I think this type of vote makes sense. It's a five-year commitment, obviously it will need the council's approval.
Yes.
For a five-year contract. Transportation, as we all know, gets paid for by the city. However, I think, given the fact that we awarded a one-year contract with an $800,000 increase, this over the next five years, I, I think is worth it. It locks that particular company who we already have a one-year contract with for five additional years, and I think the savings, because we probably didn't realize the savings in year one because we couldn't spread it out over the five years, we'll see those savings going forward with this request that we'll make, obviously, to the council. If you would, if I may, through the chairman, ask Mr. Pacico to just share that briefly with the committee and then I'll yield.
Sure, so the savings after negotiating with Tremblies for the special ed transportation van only, that contract that is currently held by Tremblies includes McKenney-Vento. It was procured last time, the one-year contract, and also the five-year contract that ultimately didn't get approved, those were procured through 30B. We have the ability to negotiate with the contractor for special ed transportation. Tremblies was the only bidder on this for the five-year and also for the one-year, so we felt comfortable dealing with Tremblies and negotiating this contract with them. It's approximately $388,000 per year over 20 years, close to $2 million of savings on this portion alone. The McKenney-Vento portion will now go out as a 30B request, and we're hoping to see some savings on that portion also. The, the, coming up on the agenda is the, the rest of the IFB for transportation, but this particular piece, that savings, considering it's cut down from the, without the McKenney-Vento, is a considerable amount of money to save for our first year and obviously subsequent years.
Kevin?
So, the, I see something in here from Futures?
Yes.
Are they still with us?
They are.
On the same 30,000 from?
Close to it.
Or is this another one, or is it the same?
It's, there's a, a small contract for this and the IFB, yes. A small dollar amount, which is part of transportation, yes.
Yeah, I, I like you, Mr. Pacico, but if any contracts come forth for Futures, I will be voting no, based on the mess that they put us in the last time. So I don't know if this ever came forth and I just missed it, but when I see this, I, I know that they help you and I, I really just don't like the way that that last situation was handled, so that's all I got to say about that part. Can you just tell, in comparing what we had, the 5 million, five years?
Yes.
That we've got not signed and all that stuff, what is the apples-to-apples comparison to what this is?
So, apples-to-apples, this would be, with the exception of the McKenney-Vento, so if we pull the McKenney-Vento piece out of, out of the, the savings, which we had in the first five-year piece, and again, the reason for that savings is the fact that the tiering process and the, and the ride-sharing process would, was working very well in that first contract. The second contract, for the one year, that was eventually awarded, there was a major upgrade in the amount of equipment that was purchased by the company and therefore, not knowing that they were going to have another bite at the apple, had to basically cover all that cost the first, on the first bid. So what we're seeing here is a savings because the, some of the equipment's already purchased, we're seeing the accuracy of the routes coming into play and the tiering that he was able to do with what, what we gave them to work with on the negotiations. So we are going to be close to the initial bid, hopefully when the, the second bid comes in, to equal, if not exceed, the, the first number for that five-year contract.
And they, we, we had never had the monitors included in that $5 million number to begin with?
They were included in, in the number, we just are pulling it out of the number so that we can get an accurate cost of what monitors are costing us. They were built into the bus price.
Yeah, so I see where it says 3.894 million, doesn't include the monitors. So if you added the monitors, you're at 4 point something.
But it pulls the, it pulls those numbers back in on the in-district special ed transportation on the second to the last page, or third page, I'm sorry.
So it's, it's within the 3.8 million?
Yes.
In the contract, it says it's not, and some, some sort of language that I was reading in here? So the, the front piece says 3.894 million dollars, then within it, it says on bullet number five, "The cost of the monitor is in addition to the aforementioned prices." 3.8.
Prices, but not necessarily the total. So the savings includes the monitors, the savings.
Yeah, I'm just looking for the cost.
The overall cost of the contract is...
So, we were at 5 million with McKenney-Vento a year ago.
Yes.
Now we're at 3.8 million without the, the, I think it says, it's got to be a couple hundred thousand for the monitors or something, 100 and some thousand? I'm just trying to see what we're actually saving because...
You're saving three point, you're saving $388,000. After the numbers, after the bid, we're saving 388 total. That's what we're saving.
Per year.
Including the monitors, per year, yes.
And that's based on Futures?
Yes.
So, I mean, I'm going to support this because I trust you and I think you, you're trying the best you can. I do think that, even now, it's still confusing. What I would like to is ask the chairman if he's going to sign a five-year bid, because the last time we had him, he didn't sign, it cost us $800,000. Can we get your commitment on that, or?
Yes.
All right, thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Kevin. Good, Tom.
So, Mr. Pacico, so in my time here on the school board, I've come to see transportation as being a real, real hot-button issue for the school board to grapple with, because of the amount of expense there is in transportation and all of that. And I respect everything that's been, been said so far. I'm not going to talk about money here, I want to talk about power. On the first sheet of the Futures sheet, in bullet number three, it says Tremblies appears to be able to both recruit and retain quality drivers. My concern is involving student safety. I had a lot of experience in monitoring kids at the end of the school day to get on buses safely and make sure that their safety was ensured. Last year, I received a call from a parent on two occasions involving the same school child from Green, in issues that were involved with this child who had had brain issues, and it was a special ed bus, involving non-verbal students and, and brain, brain injuries, where this child was hit twice on each separate occasion, and the mother was livid, and rightfully so, where the bus monitor did not even underst, was not aware of the situation that occurred on the bus. So my concern is with the bus monitors and the drivers and their sense of awareness in regard to our student's safety. What type of leverage do we as a school board have on a contract with any bus company in regard to student's safety?
So each incident, obviously, is investigated by us after the bus company does their own investigation. We have cameras on the buses that, that are, most of, all of Tremblies buses have cameras on them. So we review that, the camera, and I don't want to say 100% of the time, but 98% of the time...
I, I know it's not going to be 100% of the time.
Yeah, 98% of the time.
So if there's an incident that occurs, do we have the leverage to, like, really be punitive with?
Yes, we do. So we've, we've asked, we, I, punitive, I'm not, is not in my wheelhouse. What I, what I will tell you is, is that we've had monitors dismissed, we've had monitors moved, we'd had drivers dismissed, drivers removed completely, not driving for us anymore, that stuff we've done to all of us companies at one point or another. And that we will follow through with. Donna does a great job chasing down all of these issues and bringing parents in and trying to get resolutions for all of our issues.
Yeah, the incident that I'm referring to, the monitor was on the bus, but engaged in a device at the time that the incident occurred, and the monitor missed the incident. This cannot...
Tom, Tom, hold on, hold on. You, you were told that.
Yeah.
You don't know that.
No, no, it was investigated by, it was investigated. I just don't want to see anything like that happen again.
Sure, please be careful.
Thank you, with that, I yield.
Anything, uh, Mr. Hetzel?
Just a quick question. So looking over the Student Opportunity Act, I noticed that the students, some of the transportation costs are reimbursable rolling out over the next couple of years, is that true? Is that applied to this?
No, as far as I know.
Doesn't apply to our district?
No, no, I'm sorry. The out-of-district placement transportation costs are not what he's talking about tonight.
Right, but that's, isn't it in the same, some of this is out-of-district transportation?
Some of the overall cost.
So...
Has changed, but not in our, if I will, in what we're presenting tonight in our Chapter 70 net school spending.
All right.
So, but there is re, a greater reimbursement for, well, it, the SOA will, will help us in transportation, but it's not what we're talking about in terms of investments in ed because it's two separate parts of money.
All right.
It's confusing, but, but the state did make a decision to fund at a higher level out-of-district transportation.
All right. Thank you, I yield.
Roll call?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Discussion item number eight, FY '21 transportation IFB as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee and presented by Ken Pacico, Chief Operating Officer.
So the, the IFB that you have before you is all-inclusive with the exception of 7D special ed transportation. Everything else is in here, this is sports and activities, this is McKenney-Vento, and all other yellow bus transportation, both typical education and special ed.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Agia?
One quick, I think I know the answer to this as well, but the software's up and running across the whole, everything's working?
It is, and we also have, actually, within the next week, a week and a half, we do have Traversa coming here and working with our people to look at the items we have in here to see if we have any other opportunities for savings, but it's worked out very well.
And I know we talked in the past about having everybody, or the majority of people, 7D certified?
Yes.
In the offices, we're either working on that or it's done?
It hasn't started, and, and to be totally honest, I have not worked on it yet, but thank you for the reminder and I will...
It's just a good idea, I mean, I'm not giving you a hard time, it's just, the more people that we have, especially now, we're going to have different modes of transportation that would work, so with that...
We can work on that, absolutely.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Mr. Hetzel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few questions.
Yes.
So, I believe last time we went out to bid, all the people who were interested in bidding asked questions, and we provided answers.
Yes.
So if we find that there is something that's stopping a number of people from bidding, do we have the ability to amend?
We would do, so we'd issue addendums.
All right.
So every, every question that's asked, we make sure everyone has the, if, if one company asks a question, all the companies will get the response, and any items that are prohibitive, prohibiting them from bidding or are being prohibitive or discriminating in any way to a company in particular, we correct those issues with an addendum.
All right, and we have the ability to expand and reduce routes?
Once we sign contracts.
Right, because I know we might phase out GATE and we could include pre-K?
Yes.
Excellent.
We have 25% up or down.
All right, thank you, I yield.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Okay. Proposed FY '21 budget as presented by Dr. Matthew Malone, Superintendent of Schools, is item number nine.
If I have the committee come down to the front, we'll do a brief presentation. So, we have, we're blessed that we have two new members of the committee who have not, not been part of these budget presentations in the past. I will want you to know, this is my favorite night of the year. I get to do my budget presentation, and I will be very, very quick tonight. As you can tell, I'm suffering from the flu or something, and I'm feeling awful, as probably some of you are, we're all coughing, so this will be quick, and then this starts the questions. So tonight isn't the end-all, be-all, but this is a pretty good, robust budget presentation. So, so what is a budget? So in Fall River, in the city of Fall River, our budget is really our statement of core values. What do we believe in? It's our planning tool, thinking about how are we going to invest in, needs that we have in the field, and it's also a communication vehicle to let people know what we think is important. It also provides our strategic roadmap, but it's, it's a living document, it's not set in stone. So tonight we present what's known as the superintendent's proposed budget. Once I'm done, it then becomes the school committee's budget, and the school committee deliberates for the next several months to come to a final document. So, so what is the goal of, of, of funding schools? What's the goal of it? So the law established in Ed reform in '93 essentially provides each community with sufficient resources to fund their public schools. In Massachusetts, it's a combination of both state and local contributions, and the goal is to provide an adequate minimum per-student funding formula. So how is it determined? So there's three steps to determine, Chapter 78. The first is calculating a foundation budget, which happens at the state level. Then through the Department of Revenue, they determine what's the municipal growth factor, which determines how much wealth does a local community have? How much can they afford to spend on their schools given their other needs? And then finally, once that determination is figured, the state says, well, we'll cover the rest. So it's the local contribution plus the stated equals the net school spending requirement, which is by law what each community has to fund its school system at. So here in Fall River, we have the foundation budget, we have our local contribution, and we have Chapter 78. All three of these together are known as net school spending. So you hear us say net and non-net and NSS quite a bit, but for us, net school spending, 100% of net school spending is where we want to be as a starting point each year in our budgeting process. So, so what is net school spending? Essentially, it's every single cost that goes into educating a child in the Fall River Public Schools. The Department of Ed calls it the foundation budget. So that includes every dollar minus transportation, some other things that get taken out, which equals a figure. This year, that figure is quite a bit, I'm going to talk about in a second. But the actual net school spending is actually what we spend. So there are years when we're above net school spending, there are years when we're below, we work out those issues with the, with the city, and we come out by law at 100% at least every single year. When, you know, and I throw this into the bottom, when, when folks are like, oh, what is, how much does a local community spend on its schools when you're buying a house, let's say? The net school spending figure is, is really what people are talking about, the actual net school spending. Go ahead. So, so in addition to what we spend on education, there's all sorts of costs that no one ever sees, and these are known as chargebacks or write-offs that the local community, for us, the city of Fall River, applies, they're known as Schedule 19. What are the other fees and costs that a district, a community has to fund education? Those are minus or subtracted off the top, known as indirect costs, and, and for us in the city of Fall River, we've been blessed that we've been able to have an MOU, an agreement. What will those costs be? So that agreement was last modified in, in 2018, and we'll continue to work on it. We're happy with the document that we have had, but, but goods not the enemy are great, we can always improve on that, on that document. So, so where are we? So here's the state process. On January 22nd, the governor released his budget known as House Two. It's called House Two because it's the second year of the legislative... It's called House Two because it's the second year of the legislative session. So his budget was released on that day, and from there, House Ways and Means will begin working, and then Senate Ways and Means will work, and then he'll get back to a conference committee, and then hopefully by the last day in June, at least, he'll have a final budget, and we'll know exactly what it is that we get. Now, it sounds kind of crazy, like why do we have to wait till then, but that's the political process. But what does that mean for us here in the great city of Fall River? Well, we want to do the absolute right thing and be able to have a goal of a school committee having a budget completed and proven, adopted, that makes educational sense. So we know that with the new charter, that we have some additional meetings that have to happen with the city council, et cetera, joint meetings, but we began our process in November. We started with surveys, we went in December, where you guys adopted budget priorities, then we've held all our zero-based budget meetings with our site-level leaders and, and orgs, and now we're in February presenting tonight's proposed budget. Then we'll get into finance committees, subcommittees, and we'll meet with everybody, and we'll keep talking, then we'll have hearings, and we'll go through a whole process that gets the committee to the end of the fiscal year in a place where they can finalize a budget request and, and, and work with the city council to approve a final budget. So in developing our plan, our budget proposal, which is a spending plan, where we try to be strategic. What is the best bang for our buck, if you will, in closing achievement gaps and investing in the needs of kids? So we're being strategic, we're being transparent, we're thinking aloud, but we're focused on issues of acqua, access and equity, the two most important core values to improve student achievement. So let's take a look at, at the great city of Fall River and the Fall River Public Schools. Here's where we are right now. At a glance, we've got enrollment, 10,229 students. This is our district demographic, so if you, you look at where we are, I'll show you some slides in a second, but this is where we are today. This is some select populations also compared to the state. You look at first language, non-English, we're beating the state in every single category here, English language learners, students with disabilities, high needs, and economically disadvantaged. So us compared to state, we have much greater need, and using the foundation budget formula than the Student Opportunity Act, we'll receive additional dollars because of the enhanced needs that we have. So, so here's a new slide that's a snapshot from when, when, when I began my service here as your superintendent to where we are today. Now, we're up 66 students since that time, but really what I want to draw your attention to is in the yellow highlighted down below. You see that for first language, non-English, and English language learners, the percentage is above where we were just four years ago. Students with disability up, high needs up, economically disadvantaged up. The cost of educating a child in Fall River has increased exponentially since just four years ago. We know that the needs are great, and therefore the investments that we must make to be able to close those gaps and open doors. So this is a great shot, again, that just shows four years. So here's a great slide, love this slide. Now, look at this, since school year 11, we were 5.4% English language learners. We're now up to 19%. So you think about that growth in a short period of time, almost four times as much. So that's the number of second language learners that we're serving. So we know that that's a huge significant part of our budget. We've got to make sure that we're aligning resources to support the needs of second language learners. Tonight, in subcommittee, we talked about the opening of the two-way immersion program at Viveris, which is a great gold standard of, of how best to meet those needs, but thi- this shows you just, you know, in, in, in clear color that the district, the needs in such a short period of time have changed so much. So who are we? So we represent 1,641 FTEs, we're 899 teachers, nurses, and behaviorists, we're 282 paraprofessionals, we're 136 administrators and counselors, we've got 28 government program employees, we're 117 facilities maintenance and operations strong, nutrition 183, that includes part-time, 40 clerical, 16 security, and 76 individual service contract non-union employees. This is the, the workforce that we have focused on meeting the needs of the kids in the city of Fall River. That photo was taken last year at the Admin Institute. If we could do that again on choose-love day, we've got to put tape and make that an actual heart. It's kind of an upside-down heart, but we'll get it right this coming year. Go ahead. So where are we in the, in the, in the budget process? FY '21 budget. Tonight, I present what's known as the Superintendent's Proposed Budget, but we've been working on this thing for months, so this isn't like, oh, tonight we just show up and we give you something. We've been working hard strategically, figuring out with all our stakeholders what's so important. Different this year than previous years because of the Student Opportunity Act, we've done tremendous community engagement. So we've met with our LPAC, our SPED PAC, we've had a community forum, we've done a ton of surveys, we'll have more student engagements coming up as well, trying to figure out everyone's priorities. And the great thing is that we got triangulation, the priorities are all sounding the same. So tonight I come and present to you, and I use the following parameters: best practices for each site, each cost center, student needs driving decision, allowing our principals to make site-based decisions for conversions, making sure that we're conservative in our austerity provide, a balanced budget to ensure that we're not just spending like crazy, but we're being practical, knowing what the limitations are of, of state dollars, and then, of course, prioritizing the areas of investment articulated in the Student Opportunity Act. So here's the budget priorities. You guys adopted these at the, previously in December. They're great. They, they align with what we're hearing from parents, they align with what we're hearing from, from students and staff and faculty, so I'm feeling really good about the priorities that we've heard, the areas that you guys have established for, for investment. So let's talk about Chapter 70. So here's some good news. From FY '20 to FY '21, in our foundation enrollment, we've grown 109 students. Now, that's good news, because when you're looking at foundation budgets, if you're not growing, you're, you're, you're slowly cutting off your funding stream. So growth means more money coming from the state, but also locally to support the kids. Our foundation budget has grown, look at that, from FY '20 to FY '21, $13.5 million. Required district contribution, now this is where this gets really technical in the weeds, but this is important. From last year to this year, the increase from what the city responsibility is in the budget has grown only by $1.6 million, because if you look down below, the Chapter 70 foundation share, the state's picking up 81.30% of the total cost now. Now, that's a huge investment of the state, of the Commonwealth. The state wants to get it to a point where actually the state's only paying for 77%, but because of our needs are so great, they're not there. So the actual weight of what the state's picking up for us has actually increased by .54%. Our net school spending increase has gone up by 13.56, as I mentioned, and Chapter 78 of that is almost $12 million. So the city contribution increases 1.67 at 100. So let's talk about FY '21 revenues in House Two. I just mentioned this is another way of looking at it, but I really just want you to fig, to look at that one figure, that our required net school spending number for FY '21 is $175.6 million. Now, that's a large increase in one year, but this is also a part of increased investments on the state's behalf because of the Student Opportunity Act. Next slide. So here's another way to look at that trend, look at the trend of the foundation budget in the Fall River Public Schools over the last five years. Chapter 78 is opposed to the, the district contribution. You can see Chapter 78 has gone up from the state, and the district contribution has remained flat, which is a good thing for the city. So this is going to get real weedy, but this is the FY '21 budget base rates. From on the left-hand side of these columns is the FY '21 fund. Over seven years of the Student Opportunity Act, you can see growth taking into account inflation. For example, let's just look at high schools, which is in, I think that's purple. So when you think about what we receive right now per high school kid, $9,078, that's going to grow to $10,179 over seven years. So each year, you see these figures changing, going up. This is all taking into account just the base rate for these students in Fall River. So we know, we can make an argument right now, that the next seven years in Fall River, if we continue to maintain our foundation enrollment, that we're going to be able to invest in education to meet the needs of kids, both strategically, thoughtfully, and with, 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 with an understanding that we have to close gaps, and how we do that, based on best practices, will mean investments in certain things. So go to the next slide. So this is really interesting. The left is in-district and the right is out-of-district. So FY '21 is opposed to the end of the Student Opportunity Act and FY '27, you see an increase in, in district special ed costs, but look at the, the increase in out-of-district costs. So out-of-district, we know, is, is really expensive. It costs a lot of money to send kids to out-of-district placements, but the new formula takes this into consideration. So over seven years, we'll grow from $31,000 per kid to, to almost $37,000 per kid, which is a huge investment when you think about the number of kids in out-of-district placement. Show the next slide. Now, this is fascinating, absolutely fascinating. So this is pre-K, 6-8, grades 9-12, looking at the Student Opportunity Act for second language learners. So you can see weighted more heavily at the secondary level, because we're finding that that's much more of a challenge to educate students who are older who came here without the ability to speak English than students who are younger. But you can see the increase per student, that we're going to get a base rate, and then we get this on top of that for all of our students who are second language learners. And remember the slide that I showed you before that looks like this? I want you to imagine the next seven years looking exactly the same as that. So we're going to see more money coming in to support the needs of our second language learners, to hopefully build more programs like dual immersion and the other programs that we're, we're looking to build. Hit that again. So this is a little, this is really insider baseball, but the Student Opportunity Act funded four things: health insurance, special education, second language learners, which I just showed you, and then students who live in poverty. That's the most critical for us. Now, the state doesn't have a good definition on what counts as a poor student yet, because we've gone back and forth with, remember the old days of lunch forms? You know, our mayor was a vice principal, he used to chase kids down the hallways and trying to get those forms back. We all did that. It was the fun of that time of year. We don't do that anymore, because now it's a direct certification through all sorts of other reporting systems, we determine what a district's poverty rate is. But a lot of folks at the state aren't really happy with that, so we're trying to figure out a combination of direct certification and the old lunch form method, will that lead to a true figure? The state's going to figure all that out this year, but what that means for us, if you look at the total numbers, you can see how in FY '16, when they switched from using one identifier, a lot of districts lost a ton of money. What the state tried to do in FY '21 is get the state back to the old model, so that places, I remember you guys heard, like Brockton was $10 million in the hole last year because of this, the way they calculated poor kids. Luckily, we're not in that situation, but we're feeling the effects in a positive way of our percentage, which is about 70%. So you see us knowing that with 70% of our students at this rate, we're going to receive more money over the next seven years to support their needs. And that's what this looks like. Now, this is absolutely mind-boggling in a, in a, in a, in a good way, but let me just explain this to you. The state does 12 deciles for coding students who come from poverty. We're in the 11th decile right now. Districts, there used to only be 10, but they had to expand it to, to make sense, and there's not enough money in the pot to do all, I don't know, I'll explain in a second, to do all that the state wanted to do here, but districts that are in the 12th have about 80% poverty. We're at 70, so we're in the 11th. So the short stack at the 11th decile, about 4.8 or $4,800, that's going to almost double over seven years to $8,076 with inflation. So for every single poor child that we have in the district, which represents 70% of our kids, our budget's going to grow by another $4,000 over seven years. If, or take, that, that's the truth. What the state did this year was instead of funding us at 14%, which is essentially seven, you know, what the equal proportion would be over seven years, we're funded only at 4%, not just Fall River, but the whole state. Poor kids only are getting 4% of the increase. So there's 96%. If this budget stays as is through the House and the Senate, we're still, over the next six years after this, we're going to receive the lion's share, 96% of the full funding of poor students. And, and really, what's fascinating in this is, I don't think the state understood how much it was going to cost, and that's one of the reasons why we're being funded at 4%, because this is a large part of money. But let's just be honest, what's the greatest expense that we have? It's educating kids who come from poverty, and it's all the other associated ancillary services that come with that. So we know there'll be a huge investment if the state continues to uphold their end of the, of the Student Opportunity Act, which we know that they will. So here's the requirements of the Student Opportunity Act. One, evidence-based practices. What are good practices? We've got to invest in good practice, early childhood, second language learner programs, SEL supports, paras in classrooms, smaller class size, all, all the things we know are evidence-based practices. We have to invest in those. Two, we've got to engage the public in the process. Three, we've got to write a resource allocation plan. That's the plan I told you, we're going to come back to the committee with a couple times between now and the end of March, so we can submit that in April. And then four is the outcome metrics. We're going to write some metrics, but the state are also writing metrics, and those state metrics won't be written until next fall, so you can assume that they're just going to use the accountability metrics. So what are the guiding principles for our plans for the Student Opportunity Act? We're going to provide a menu-based, I'm, I'm sorry, menu of evidence-based practices. Tonight's budget that I present to you includes all of these evidence-based practices, and then you can also submit some things that are outside of this. So for example, attendance initiatives. You'll see tonight, I talk about schools that have over 700 kids. I'm trying to start something interesting with some additional supports to really focus on student attendance. And then here are the key dates for our Student Opportunity Act, codified in law, budget, plan, process, and then final budget. So we're going to get back, so, so essentially, the school committee this year, different than past years, will take two votes, one on an opportunity act plan, hopefully at the end of March, and then two on the actual budget, which won't happen until May or June. And these plans are three-year plans, so as I talked to you before about them being dynamic, because we don't even know what we're going to end up with at that point. So we're going to put this good stuff in and continue to invest. Now, the strategy that we use this year is that I'm hitting little beachheads, meaning I couldn't do everything that everyone wants, we just don't have the money, but I can get a beachhead on little areas so that we can take the hill over the seven years, because we're going to get all the funding, but we're starting with smaller beachheads. So we're, our budget this year is meeting your budget priorities that you establish. It continues the budget development process, which is face-to-face. We're building trust and transparency between the sites and the central office. We're incorporating stakeholder input, and our budget includes us being smart. 22 and a half conversions, reductions of taking, again, positions off the grants and putting them back in the operating fund, so we'll have more grant dollars if the grants remain vibrant, and if not, we, we don't have to worry about cutting anything, because we've already reduced. And this budget includes a net gain of 107.26 positions, which sounds like a lot, and it is a lot, but when you hear how we've done this, you're going to say, oh, they're being very thoughtful and pragmatic and practical in investing in the areas where there are needs. So our strategic investments, what are they? Enhanced core instruction, expansion of pre-K programming for four-year-olds, including conversions of all of our half-day four-year-old programs to full day. So we'll roll that out in one year. We'll maintain our three-year-old programs as half-day, but all four-year programs will be full day, just like we do with Fonseca and DORN. We're actually going to expand in the classroom space that we have available, and this budget includes at least two brand-new four-year-old classrooms, hopefully a third. We also invested in the ability to purchase the curriculum materials to support all core instruction. Targeted. Targeted student support. Now, these four areas are what are articulated in the SOA law. Targeted student support, additional staffing for substantially separate classrooms, inclusions, and then ESL mainstream and supports. We're expanding the foundational program. So at the middle level, not all foundation students will go to Talbot. We'll now have a bifurcated model. And the other program will either begin at Cus and Morton, where we figure out their space. We've added additional six adjustment counselors. It was a request for eight. Based on numbers, I was able to fund six in my proposal to you. Talent development. We're, we're looking at the instructional support liaisons, which you guys created this past year. Those are the pairs with the bachelor's degrees that are amazing pipeline into the teaching field, which is a teacher recruitment tool for us, or a teacher pipeline tool. We've added those to provide direct service to students to make the classrooms feel smaller. We're also expanding access to arts, athletics, enrichment, which is through the ability also to be able to have common planning time for core teachers. And then finally, we're looking at the addition and creation of the, of the community facilitator and parent positions to support the homeschool partnerships, particularly with second language learners. So here's the budget proposal. Tonight's FY twenty, oh, the FY twenty operating budget was a hundred and sixty-two point one-nine million dollars. This year FY twenty, net school spending, House One, a hundred and seventy-five point six million dollars. Our proposed budget is a hundred and seventy-six point six million dollars, which is a delta of nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, which if we're talking about net school spending, the budget that I'm proposing to you represents one hundred point five six of net school spending. It's not a hundred, it's not a hundred and one, it's a hundred point five six. We are feeling pretty good that, as the budget process just started with the state, that I think the House and the Senate are going to do a little bit better. We always start at the floor with the governor's number. But, but this budget that I'm proposing tonight, I think is an outstanding starting point for us. It comes in slightly above the minimum requirement and allows us to strategically invest in our key areas. I'm going to talk about this in the specifics in a second. I'm just going to finish these slides, and we'll be done with this slide. So what does that mean in terms of categories? You can see our most important investment is the people. That's salaries and benefits. There's a change there. It represents seventy-four percent of the budget. Contractual services, materials and supplies. You see that go up quite a bit. It's a huge investment in the proposed budget in materials and supplies. To include things such as, like athletic uniforms for the programs that we have, to include things like the, the text and materials and the, and the, and the core curriculum that we need. So you can see that when you add up all those categories, you wind up with, with the total spending proposal that the state's requiring. So what am I concerned about? Well, let's just be frank. I'm, I'm really feeling good about this budget. So it's not like I'm, like, concerned, like, oh, my God, this guy's fallen. But this guy's always fallen. So we've got to be able to address that, right? So transportation's always a bear. Grant reductions. The school redesign grant at Fonsica, sunsets, it's gone. I've picked up all the funding at, at Fonsica in this budget. We're keeping their extended time and the positions. They're still a level-four turnaround school, and we're not turning our back on them. That's what we do. So I've built that into the budget. Inclusive preschool grant has been reduced. So we have to backfill that as well, because that's critically important to the overall work. The extended learning time grant that specifically funds CUS, Silvia, and Bavarius is not part of the governor's budget. So we don't know where that will be, but that's about three million dollars. So if that is sunset, I don't know if we're going to be able to offer ELT in those three schools. We've got to figure that out, and we're going to continue to have discussions about options as we roll that out. Charter school, school choice expenses is always something that we're concerned about. Out-of-district sped tuition, utilities is always a moving target, and then capital infrastructure. But we're trying to be so strategic now that we're getting much better at forecasting what those costs are. So as part of, of tonight's budget process, we'll also talk about also what are our capital improvements need. So last year, we, we spent five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars on school safety and security equipment and technology. This year, we propose to do the same, using one-time funds, perhaps at the end of the year. Henry Lord, Phase Two of their, of their traffic procedures, going to cost us about a hundred and sixty-five million. Sylvia, Phase Two, looking at cost unknown, but the cost design and permitting for their egress is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Talbot, we're going to be working with the city to look at parking lot, sidewalk curbs, and drainage improvements, to make sure that we get that right. And then, long-term, the next round of requests for us with the state is going to be Henry Lord on the green repair programs. So we're looking at, and we didn't include Sylvia in those costs, but this is substantial investment that we're continuing to make in capital requests. We've also, as you know, preventative maintenance is something that we've invested heavily in. We do that also in this budget, which we're very proud of. So here are the important budget planning dates. Now, look at those kids, look at those photos. I hope everyone's happy with the photos we used in our presentation tonight, because they're all our students. These are modern photos, and they're pretty, they're pretty great. And so tonight, we present to the school committee. We expect, we expect to be meeting through February and March in subcommittee, and then we expect deliberations of committee from March to April. Then we expect an adoption of the SOA plan, which is a subset of this, late March, to be submitted in April. And then we go into April with the joint council, and the budget submitted to the mayor, the school committee hearings, and then submit final budget to the city council, yes, the citizens' import, et cetera, all those things in May. So this is the final slide. Look at that. That's the face of Fall River. The beautiful photos we used tonight. This is our recognition and thanks. So Kevin Almeida has done a, a, the bear of the work on this. Dr. Tracy Curley really was helpful throughout. Dr. Dagan, Mike Loesch, Kenny Pacheco, Tom Coogan, Frank Farias, Brian Michael Azak, Paula Soers, Deb Cabral, all the principals and their site-level leadership teams, all senior department heads and the org leaders, our union president, Rebecca Kusick, who really functions, is a, is a great mouthpiece for the needs of the field. And then tonight, we're also thanking Tracy Novak from MASC, who really helped us with the SOA slides. And finally, of course, thanking the school committee for all their work. So tonight's budget represents an increase of thirteen point four million dollars over last year's spending, but we've added that point five six above that. So the request that I have this year is a hundred and seventy-six point six million dollars. It includes, and you have these, this handout in their binder, the first two pages are how we show our, our orgs. The third page represents the city's costs. And then we get into the most important part, which is the investments. And this articulates all of the positions that we're requesting to support the needs of kids in the field and how they are aligned with the Student Opportunity Act. All of these positions are direct service support. We're very proud of. The next line has some, the next page has some consolidations and where we've taken positions, I'm sorry, consolidations, conversions, and where we've taken positions off of grants. The last two pages show you the operating dollars in terms of where we've invested additional operating dollars to support curriculum materials and technology, infrastructure, et cetera. But then the last page, this is where I want to draw your attention. I'm not going to be like Brad Pitt and make a political statement about forty-five seconds. But all of these positions are also what was requested by members of our team in the field. If we had received the full funding of the poverty factor, I would be able to fund all of these positions. So, but I can't, because we received thirteen million, we're expecting sixteen million in the first year. But these things are important, too. So when I developed this budget, I did the very best I possibly could to give everyone something that they needed, but I couldn't do it all. So we're being very strategic and smart. As we go through our budget process, you have in your binders the requests from all the site-level leaders, and you'll see some things that they asked for that I wasn't able to fund. We're looking forward to asking questions. Well, why did you make decisions? You know, how did you make this decision over that decision? Everything's a trade-off. You can't do everything. But we did the best we could, as I said, in year one of what I've shown to you to be substantial investment over seven years. So the good news about this budget right now, and the good news about the Student Opportunity Act, is that we're not talking about unknowns. We know that next year, there's going to be increased weighting on all those areas. We know that in seven years, we're going to, you know, our budget will be up over two-hundred-something million dollars by the end of that time, which is a huge investment in the needs of kids. We know we're going to be held accountable to close achievement gaps. And you know that you can count on us to be good stewards and honest brokers and transparent in our ability to provide the results and the details needed for members of the committee. So with that, I'm going to be quiet now. And if there are any questions, we'll answer them. If there aren't any questions, we're just going to look forward to the next phase of the process, which is, of course, the finance committee meetings. So with that, I thank you for your patience and your time on my detailed presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can just ask, Mr. Superintendent, and I know we're going to get a chance to have full conversations on this, but one of the slides was your S, your school year twenty-one strategic investments. I think in our binder, that slide that you had up there was expanded. The one we have is condensed. So a lot of those priorities aren't listed in our binder. If we can get that full slide, just so members have that for the presentation. So what we talked about in grade score instruction, targeted student support, talent development, and conditions for student's success. On the screen, those were expanded, gave us those bullets. In our binder, they're condensed. So that information's not available in our binder. So if we can just get that swapped out. First of all, let me just say thank you. This is obviously a budget that you've worked with your staff on. I, I think it speaks to the needs in this district very clearly. I think it incorporates the Student Opportunity Act, core areas that were identified as part of the legislation. So I know that you're asking for over a hundred new positions. I would just say that that list you've shown, that you showed the committee at the end of the presentation, where there were positions that you're not going to be able to fund, I would just suggest that if, in attempting to fill the hundred-plus new positions, if you find that there aren't enough human capital in terms of people out there looking for those types of positions, that you quickly shift gears and look for an opportunity to fill the ones that may be on that list. Because let's face it, if you do get the funding that you've asked for, trying to fund a hundred-plus new positions in a district where we already know we turn over a percentage of FTEs already, you may have those salaries embedded in this budget, however not be able to find the people to fill it. And rather than waiting a year with that funding sitting in professional salaries accounts, let's go to the list where we might be able to find individuals to fill those positions. And maybe that'll offer a level of support to schools that they might not otherwise have. I think it's a, a rather ambitious goal to suggest that Fall River Public Schools will be able to find over a hundred new staff for next year. So I say that, that if the funding does come through, and you're unable to find those positions that you were counting for in your budget, to look to that list of suggestions that were made by your staff, and maybe there are those individuals who may be available that we can fill those positions with. And just lastly, I, you know, I appreciate all of the people who were a part of creating this budget recommendation. And I know you gave recognition, and I also just want to add to that list, certainly our local delegation for the work they did on the Student Opportunity Act. You know, Senator Rogic, Representative Sylvia Fiola and Schmidt, I know they were supportive of the Student, Student Opportunity Act and continue to be. So in addition to all those other people, I just think publicly, with thirteen million dollars plus in additional money slated to come to Fall River, that obviously, we want to recognize our partners at, at the state level as well for their work. But good job, Mr. Superintendent, as always. I always enjoy the animation that comes along with your budget presentations. It speaks to your level of energy and commitment that you have, not only to our staff here and human capital that, that you represent as part of being our superintendent, but certainly the passion you have for the kids that we service, particularly the ones that I identified here in this budget, our English-language learners, our special leads, our low-income students, and also the recognition you give to our staff for the work they do. It doesn't go unnoticed by me as one individual, and I want to thank you and your staff for this presentation. I look forward to having further conversation with you as we go forward in this budget season. With that, Mr. Chairman, I yield.
Anything further?
I'd just like to follow up on those comments, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you. Those comments were eloquent. And not an easy job putting a budget together. I happened to walk into the ad building a couple of weeks ago and saw the session and progress, and I was amazed at how many facts and figures that they had to go through to, in order to make choices and decisions that would befit this budget. But one thing I'm so proud of in our school district is that we're targeting areas for real need in this budget, especially the sped. I've seen, I've seen a real laser focus on sped and growing that department. It's so necessary, as a retired adjustment counselor, to see six new positions hired. I'm extremely proud of that and the growth in the area of social-emotional learning. I think we're laser-focused, and I'm very proud of this preliminary report as we continue to refine it toward its final progress. Thank you very much.
Kev?
So I might have missed what Vice Chairman Coster was asking, but the slide about the people, is that not in here? The slide about the new positions that were asked for but not?
No, it's in your handout.
That's, that's in here?
Yes.
All right. I can't find that, but...
It's in the summary, right after the presentation.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure it out. The only thing I would just like to say is that this is, when you look at the process, the school committee role is to look at things, and through our discussions, there might not be changes in here. There might be changes along the way. So I just want to encourage my colleagues to ask the proper questions. And when there comes a need for maybe potentially making a decision to fund X instead of Y, that we keep an open mind to that. This is our first, superintendent presents it, this is our first time looking at it. So I'm sure I want to have a lot more questions. But one of the things I would ask is the, the chart that goes, you know, the matrix, if we can get that updated to what potentially could be with, with the budget. So like, I'm just big on the equity piece of looking at...
We can do that in a different color.
Yeah. So for instance, a school that has eight hundred students should have more supports than a student that has six hundred typically, for the most part. So I just think that that's something that I'd, one of the things I'd be looking at. The other two things that I would like to, I don't know what's in here and what's not in here, but we've had discussions in the past about certain names of positions that don't make sense, and we were going to work on those. Like, I think one of them might have been coordinator of support versus a SAC or something like that. All I would ask is that as we go through this process, that we try to correct some of those, or at least not go down that road even, even more.
We're on the same page.
Yep. So I would just ask for that. I do thank you for your presentation, and I would like to commend the committee for making the committee as the whole be the people to talk. You know, I think that's going to be a big difference this year, where everybody gets a bite at the apple to talk about this. So with that, I yield. Thank you very much.
Anything further? Mr. Hetzler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah. Great job on the budget. I was very happy to see, especially the social-emotional piece. I noticed the adjustment counselors, power professionals, it seems to be hot on every school's request. So I was happy to see that. It's a huge task to try to decide how to spend that much money. Thankfully, the state was able to help us out, and I think you've done a good job. Time will tell, but thank you to everyone. Time will tell, but thank you to everyone. Thanks. I yield.
Okay. This is going to be a huge budget. For the Fall River Public Schools, the biggest ever. We have a lot, a lot of work to do. But with this money comes a lot of increased scrutiny from the state, and they want to know how it's being spent and what it's doing to improve instruction. So everybody here is going to get a piece of it, and we're all going to own it, everybody on the stage, and everybody in the audience, and everybody watching. We have to ramp it up a little bit, which is exactly why they gave us the money. We can sure use it, and I know we're going to do a great job with it. I want to thank the committee, the extensive list of names that Mr. Malone put out that had a piece of this presentation, and this is just step one. And then we'll, we were just discussing when we'll start the finance hearings, but everybody come prepared, and I'm sure we'll have a lot of fun. Thank you. Next item up on the agenda. Item ten, year-to-date budget report as presented by Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer.
So in front of you is the monthly budget report. As of the end of January, we are where we need to be. We are right on target to spend the budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
One question.
Mr. Agia.
Just a question on the, any results on the health care coming over from the city?
So at this time, the, what we submitted on the end-of-year report initially was twenty-three point three million dollars for health insurance. And right now, we're at about twenty-three point five million estimated expenditure, but I anticipate that number coming down a bit, so it's going to, I believe it'll be around twenty-three million or so.
What I was talking about is the prior year where they owe us still money from the health care line that was reduced? You know, the current year?
Yes.
Are we expecting to get an influx of money from the city that would replenish some of our funds?
We should, we will be getting at some point this year at least eight hundred thousand dollars, and we will be reviewing the insurance line item as the year goes on.
Did you say it was a hundred thousand?
Eight hundred thousand dollars.
Eight hundred. So at one point, it was potentially one point five? Eight hundred is what we agreed to so far?
At this time.
Yep. So only reason I'm asking is we keep on spending down a little bit, but if it's money that's sitting there and the city agrees to at least the eight hundred, I think we should get that sooner than later, and then we can make the decision from that point. Without a yield.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hark?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have some additional items for your information.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve and place on file.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, any new business to come before the committee at this time? None, hearing none. Do we have reason to go into an executive session?
Yes, we would, Mr. Mayor. At your request, I can read them off.
Please.
First, national laws, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-seven, to review and approve executive session committee minutes for the January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, regular meeting of the Fall River School Committee. Second, national laws, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-seven, to review and approve executive session committee minutes for the January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, special meeting of the Fall River School Committee. Also, national laws, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A-one, to review the open meeting law complaint dated January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, filed by Patrick Higgins regarding the January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, regular meeting of the Fall River School Committee. The complaint alleges, one, that the school committee was required to list the candidates for appointment to subcommittees of the Fall River School Committee, and, two, that the chair, Paul E. Coogan, and the vice chair, Mark Costa, had quote-unquote "private side conversations" in violation of the open meeting law. Next, would be national laws, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding the lawsuit filed in Bristol County Superior Court, Colleen Murray Hackett v. versus Meg Mayo Brown, Fall River Schools and the Fall River School Committee, docket number one-six-seven-three-CV-oh-oh-four-eight-six, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the litigation position of the school committee. National laws, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all cafeteria employees of the Fall River School System, represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council, ninety-three, local eleven eighteen, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National laws, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all custodial employees of the Fall River School System, represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, council ninety-three, local eleven eighteen, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National laws, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all safety slash securities employees of the Fall River School System, represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, council ninety-three, local eleven eighteen, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National laws, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Fall River Administrators Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National laws, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all professional teaching employees of the Fall River School System, including coaches, Title I teachers, Title I teachers, nurses, occupational and physical therapists, and specialists in the teaching profession, represented by the Fall River Educators Association, as the chair has determined that no possession may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National laws, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A-two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, including Isaac Moniz, instructional support liaison, and Dr. Julia Carlson, Assistant Assistant Superintendent Chief Academic Officer. We will reconvene, there may or may not be statements at that time.
I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hark?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Recede. Roll call to come back out of executive session.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hark?
Here.
Mr. Hetzel?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larve?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Yep. Do we have to take, do we have any motions?
Make a motion to approve the executive session committee minutes for January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Second. Second.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hark?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Motion to approve the executive session committee minutes for January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, of the special meeting of the Fall River School Committee.
Second.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hark?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yep.
Motion to accept the contract as negotiated with Mr. Isaac Moniz, instructional support liaison, as negotiated with the Fall River School Committee.
Yes, second.
Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hark?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Motion to approve a modification in the contract as negotiated between the Fall River School Committee and Dr. Julia Carlson, Assistant Superintendent, Chief Academic Officer.
Second.
Roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hark?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hark?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah.[1797.33]